The meeting is now called to order. Roll call, Mr. Shapiro.
All board members are present.
Thank you, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In new, the next I'm going to read our CCS mission statement. This is a new addition to our board agenda. We are going to read this at the beginning of every board meeting. Carmel Clay Schools will provide opportunities for all students to realize their potential in an ever-changing world. And next, we will move on to the presentation portion of our meeting. And our first presentation is the Clay Middle School Robotics Team, Dr. Crosby.
Before we get started, I have a special presentation for Dr. Todd Crosby, who just completed and defended his dissertation. So he is now Dr. Crosby. So congratulations, Todd.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. Thank you, ESC personnel and board, for allowing us some time to kind of highlight our robotics programs. We do have Creekside here as well, and I know they've had a robotics program longer than we've had. We've had clubs and organizations, but this is only our third year having a robotics team that competes. Mr. Crawford's in the back. If he could come up, he's a big part of this. If we could give him a round of applause. In three years of having this program, Mr. Crawford has grown this program. We have almost 70 students in this program, and we have multiple teams that compete, two of which made it to Worlds this year in a very short time. So we have several students here. I'm going to hand the mic off. I just wanted to acknowledge the families that are here tonight. Without you, the support of a young program probably wouldn't exist. And I see your faces at a lot of the robotics programs. So if we could give our parents a round of applause as well for all they do. But before I hand it off, I just wanted to say thank you for all of your support, highlights throughout the district. Mrs. Bauer does a good job of marketing and getting things out for our robotics program. And when we're going through Worlds, she was continuing to try to keep the community up to date. But it's an awesome achievement to be able to do so early in a program, but that wouldn't be without Mr. Crawford. So I'm now going to hand it off to him and to highlight the students. Thank you.
All right. Well, we had a very adventurous season, had lots of great competitions, went about little everywhere. Did take four teams to state, we got two to Worlds, and both teams were full eighth grade groups, so we're going to lose them all this next year. So a lot to replace. But they've all, most of them have been with me all three years. So I'm very proud of them. They did a great job. We're going to go ahead and pull up, we'll pull up just one team at a time so we can announce them. Let's start with our 2529A team. So our A-team actually went to state, or went to Worlds on a design, guys, come on up. They won the design award at state to earn them their trip to Worlds. And at Worlds, they won our very first Carmel Worlds trophy. So the first team that's been able to pull off an award at Worlds. All right, so we're going to start off with Luke Bailey. And we've got Rashab Bomic. Simon Brickle. Kevin Chin. Chris Chang. Samir Myers. Aaron Rosmarion. And Cameron Wilson. And that is our 2529A team. All right, our next team, who got to Worlds on, again, a judged award, they were able to win the Build Award, correct? I'm pretty sure, yep. Build Award, to get themselves two Worlds, and that is our 2529G team. All right, our first one is Drake Bauer. Then it's Parker Bevelacqua. Henry Correll. Arien Delkar. Dualcar, sorry, it's Dualcar. Ronan Gitman. Vihon Iyer. Nathan Marshall. And Xander was not able to make it today.
As we transition to Creekside, I just want to acknowledge Brandon and Barbara. They may not say this, but currently, right now, they're offering summer camps to all 11 elementaries. And they've already ran two-week sessions, and they had over 100 students, and they will run two more weeks at Clay. They did the first two weeks at Creekside. So they're very busy through the summer building this program as well. So I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that as well. So, thank you.
Up next, we have the Creekside Middle School Robotics Team and Mr. Pelich.
Administrators and members of the board, it is my distinct honor to celebrate the accomplishments of the Creekside Middle School Robotics Team. Under the leadership of Coach Barbara Glenesque, the robotics program continues to reach new heights. Over the past three years, the program has not only grown in size, but it's also grown in reputation, tallied an impressive number of accomplishments along the way. This evening, we're excited to celebrate the accomplishments of two of our 10 state qualifying teams. The first team we're celebrating is Team 46032D, aka FrogBots. During the course of the 24-25 regular season, this team won three Robot Skills Championships, teamwork championship, and had the highest robot skills score across the state of Indiana. In addition to qualifying for the state competition, this team went on to qualify for the World Championships in Texas, where they placed 41st out of 84 teams in their division against robots across the world. They've actually brought their robot here to share in terms of taking a look at the work that they put in. Give them a round of applause. And the second team we're here celebrating is Team 46032E, Minion Mechanics. During the course of the 24-25 regular season, this team won three teamwork championships, two robot skills championships, and an excellence award. Minion Mechanics were also the 24-25 teamwork state champions, which is a first for Creekside Middle School. At the World Championships, they finished 32nd out of 80 teams in their division, and 73rd out of 327 teams in the skills division. Most notably, this team is comprised of all sixth-grade students. Let's give both teams a round of applause. I'd like to invite Mrs. Glenesque, our wonderful coach, to the podium to recognize these students for their outstanding accomplishments.
Good evening. First, I want to congratulate all of the robotics students here and all their hard work this season. Lots of our students are traveling, so we, our team is not looking quite as big. So I'm going to read all of their names for the FrogBots. There are only two students that were able to make it tonight. So we have Ian Roy. And Wenchi Zhang. Ian, did you want to drive that around at all or show anything? Okay, he's just showing it there. He's kind of showing some different things that, of how the robot works. I think it was probably one of the longest at the World Championship. The other team members that were not able to come today is Yeshua, Rithvik, and Jack. Next up, if I could have all of the members of Minion Mechanics come on up. These were the Indiana State Champions comprised of all sixth graders. Some had done some work in elementary, the rest, it was brand-new to them this year. Again, we're missing some members of the team. I'm going to read their names out first, and then I will mention the other students' names as well. Omi. Nathan. Yurav. Evans. And then I just want to mention those that couldn't come. Carson Bunch, Dalton Bunch, and Ansh Shah.
We can take a brief break now, if you would like, if anybody wants to go get pictures in the lobby area and get home. Or you are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you want to be able to get home, we'll take a break for you to do so. Public comment, but this evening, no one has signed up, so we will move on from that. After that, we are at our appointments. So at tonight's meeting, the board will appoint the Indiana School Boards Association Delegate and Indiana School Boards Association Legislative Liaison. Dr. Beresford.
It's recommended that the board appoint Mrs. Kristen Kokey as the Indiana School Boards Association Delegate and the NS School Boards Association Legislative Liaison from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. Each year, it's necessary for the board to appoint a board member to serve in those positions. At this meeting, the board will appoint representatives to serve that term. And also, a fun fact, Mrs. Kristen Kokey was appointed to the Indiana School Boards Association Region 5 Legislative Committee, one of two people from, board members from Region 5, to serve on the Indiana School Boards Association's legislative group. So we recommend that you also serve as Carmel Clay Schools liaison. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to appoint the recommended Indiana School Board Association Delegate and Indiana School Boards Association Legislative Liaison?
I move to approve the appointment of Mrs. Kokey as our School Board Association's Delegate and School Board Association Legislative Liaison.
Thank you. John, may I have a second?
I second. Okay, I second it.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we will all take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next on our agenda, we have consent. And tonight, the consent items include the Personnel Report, Claims, Payroll, Gift Applications, Obsolete Equipment, the minutes from the May 12th and May 19th executive sessions, and the May 19th regular session, school board meetings, and the CCS Building Level Safety Plan template for the 2025-2026, and the CCS Corporation Safety Plan for 2025-2026. Just as a reminder to the audience, this portion of our meeting is our consent agenda. We, it's our business portion of our meeting where we have a designated area. We've kind of grouped all of these items together, those items that I listed, so that we can efficiently consider them and approve them in a single motion. Do I have a motion to approve all items in the consent agenda?
Madam President, I move that we approve as a group items 5.2 through 5.11.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we will now vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And Dr. O'Stryke has a few words for us.
Thank you. Good evening, President Kokey, Dr. Beresford, and members of the board. I am absolutely thrilled tonight to introduce Mrs. Meg Welch as our new principal of Forest Dale Elementary School. She was just approved with the passing of the motion. And Mrs. Welch brings over two decades of experience in elementary education. She currently serves as a principal in Greenfield Central Schools, where she has demonstrated strong instructional leadership, a commitment to student growth, and a talent for fostering collaborative school cultures. She earned her bachelor's and her master's degree from Indiana University in Elementary Education. She also has her EDS and is currently working on her PhD at Indiana State University. Her background as a classroom teacher, instructional coach, and administrator has equipped her to lead with compassion, clarity, and vision. We are confident that she will be a fantastic addition to our CCS leadership team as well as the Forest Dale community. Finally, I do want to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude to all of the Forest Dale teachers, administrators, staff members, and parents for participating in the interview process as we selected Mrs. Welch. Their feedback was invaluable in helping us select a leader who we feel will be the perfect fit for the Forest Dale community moving forward. So please, or please join me in welcoming Mrs. Meg Welch as our next principal at Forest Dale Elementary School. And Mrs. Welch, I know her son has a baseball banquet tonight, and she was here, so we're going to allow her to, maybe she can catch a little bit of that, no pun intended, with the catch, this evening. So thank you for being here, Mrs. Welch.
Thank you, and thank you for all that, the background information on the process. We appreciate that. Next, we'll move on to our action items. And our first action item this evening is the non-bargaining groups' salary adjustments for 2025-2026. Dr. O'Stryke.
Thank you again. The administration is recommending salary schedule adjustments for our non-bargaining groups this evening. Significant changes were made during the legislative session, which had an impact on the state funding formula and also local property tax. Due to the uncertainty of these changes, the administration is only recommending salary adjustments for the first year of the biennium. So typically, as long as I've been here for the past six years, we've done a two-year contract, but because of the uncertainty out there, we're going to recommend a one-year salary adjustment to the following groups, which I will go ahead and share with you. So it is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the following salary schedule adjustments for administrators, department chairs, OTs and PTs, as well as our nurses. That salary adjustment is recommended at a 2% increase to all salary schedules plus increment, plus a 1% base salary stipend for employees rated effective or highly effective. Additionally, it is recommended for the Board of School Trustees to approve the following salary schedule adjustments for support staff, a 2% increase to all salary schedules plus increment. And finally, it's recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the following salary adjustments for non-salary scheduled positions. These are salary adjustments for the green team supervisor, the head coach, 6-12 athletic program oversight, and our head nurse coordinator. I recommend that the board approve the following recommendations, as I had just shared. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
May I have a motion to approve the non-bargaining groups' salary adjustments for the 2025-2026 year?
Madam President, I move to accept the non-bargaining group salary adjustments for the years 2025-2026.
Thank you, Jennifer. May I have a second? Thank you, Greg. Any discussion or any questions for Dr. O'Stryke?
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. O'Stryke, could you speak a little bit, just to remind the public about why we're doing this now versus union-represented teachers?
Yes, thank you very much for that question. So it has been, traditionally, we have approved our classified, as well of our, as well as our administrator compensation at the June meeting in preparation for July 1st, so that our business office can go ahead and process everything and not have to do any type of back pay and so on and so forth. However, due to state law with bargaining with our teachers association and our certified teachers, we have a legal timeline that we have to follow, and we're not able to start that bargaining process until September 15th of each year. So we are going to wait until then to start that process with our teachers, as we've had in the past. And then we will bring forward later in October, September, October, depending on how long bargaining takes for us, we will bring a recommendation to the board at that time.
Thank you, I appreciate the explanation.
Dr. O'Stryke, do you, you may not be able to answer this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. With the uncertainty around SB 1, state funding, et cetera, once that picture maybe becomes a little bit less murky, six months into the year, eight months into the year, do you foresee, if we have some clarity, potentially this timeline shifting a year from now? Do we potentially start this process at a different juncture, if we have a better understanding of where things may lie?
I would say no at this time. We would bring another recommendation for next year, because a lot of it is based upon that state funding formula, which includes enrollment. And while we've, we had our demographic study done recently, those are, that's the data that we're using for this recommendation. So we feel that this recommendation to the board is just and sound and respects our employees at this time. But next year, there is a lot of uncertainty. So we feel good that this is a very responsible recommendation at this time, and then we'll have to continue to sift through some of those things coming from the SB 1, SEA 1 now, and then also the funding formula.
All right, if we don't have any more discussion, we will now take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next action item is the CCS school handbooks for 2025-2026 school year. Dr. Beresford.
Hi. At the last board meeting, we had David Woodward did a presentation and shared with the board the different additions to the handbooks, student handbooks. Handbooks for elementary buildings are all the same and are posted in the same format on each of the elementary school webpages. Handbooks for middle school buildings are also all the same and posted in the same format on those webpages. And then the recommended changes to school handbooks were outlined at the last meeting, and the topics have changed, were drones, prohibiting them from being possessed or operated without permission of administration, smart glasses, which to me are like spy glasses that can do all kinds of electronic things, can't be used in a manner that constitutes any interference with the school purposes. And then personal property, that Carmel Clay School is not responsible for, you know, accidents, theft, neglect, for personal property of students. Of course, if I think is this, if the school is liable for the damage, that'd be a different situation, but we're not going to, we don't have responsibility for personal property in those situations. And then finally, school facilities, we want to put some more rules in about writing with any medium, not limited to chalk markers or painting on Carmel Clay Schools' property like sidewalks and such. And so those were the four major bullet changes, and I know you had the opportunity to discuss that at the last board meeting, but now it's here for an action item. Any questions?
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the CCS school handbooks, 2025 and 2026?
Madam President, I move to approve the CCS school handbooks for 2025-2026. Which sounds like a space number, right?
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Any discussion or any questions for Dr. Beresford? All right, thank you. We will now take a vote then. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have several change orders. And so I was going to see if we can have a motion to approve the change orders as a group. We still would have Ms. Tabitha Hughes. She is the CCS Capital Projects Manager, would be able to share information on each item individually. However, we were wanting to group the following items. The items are item 6.3, change orders for the Cherry Tree Elementary renovations. Item 6.4, change orders for the Carmel High School Nautatorium addition and existing nautatorium renovations. Item 6.5, change orders for the Carmel High School Polytech addition. Item 6.6, change orders for the Carmel High School softball complex. And item 6.7, change orders for the Carmel High School grandstand renovation. So again, we, this motion would be if I can have a motion, we will be combining items 6.3 through 6.7.
I move to take the change order 6.3 through 6.7 as one agenda item.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any discussion on grouping those items together? All right, seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And next, we will have Ms. Hughes to provide a little bit of background on the change orders.
Hi, good evening. A little bit nervous, so just bear with me. Okay, so this is, I'm going to read them in a little bit order than, different order than what you guys have because I have them in a little bit different. So first, on the nautatorium. So the net of these change orders is like just, just under $17,000. No, I'm sorry. The net of these change orders is just, is actually a credit of just over $7,000 due to a painting change order and a terrazzo change order are net costs to, net zero cost to CCS. So the, the sum of these is a credit for some painting from Chapco that we did not do. At the Polytech addition, the net of these change orders is just over $2,000. So Almet is the steel contractor. Am I allowed to say contractors' names? Okay. And so it's, this is just like, there was something that they had to do, just means and methods with the way the project progressed, with how they conflicted with the roofings. That was additional charge. But then there was also work that they didn't have to do, so it was just a small net change. As you, as the Board and the public is aware, anytime we make a change to the contractor's contract, we have to go through this process. The next one is the softball complex. This is the high school softball complex that is at Cherry Tree. That project is nearing completion, and we can close out the unused allowance monies. So that is a credit coming back to CCS. The next project would be the grandstand renovation project. So this is our stadium project. The biggest change to this is the unsuitable soils. And I just want to make sure the Board is, just knows that this is one of two change orders that you will see for unsuitable soils. So just a little bit of education. We do, before you build a project, the soil, the soils are tested. We do soil borings, and we plan the foundation and the structure around and to make sure that it can stabilize it. However, as you guys know, there was an existing structure there, our concourse and our ramping system. So we were not able to test the soil actually underneath the ramping system, which is where we found the unsuitable soils. I haven't taken a good look at the ramping system. I wasn't really going to football games prior to this project. But I heard that it was sinking a little bit, and there was some cracking and unleveling. Well, now we know. It was probably because the soil was starting to fail underneath. So that is the change. Obviously, it's a necessary change. We, we run into unsuitable soils a lot on our projects. We did it on, we did on the elementary school, on the nautatorium. When we're doing an addition, we can actually test where the building's going to go, and we can plan the foundations for that. But when there's an existing structure there, we can't do that. So that is that change, which obviously the contractor couldn't have foreseen that. We also have a west electric change order. The bulk of that change is to bring temporary power to the portable restroom trailers that used to be out there. So rather than running a bunch of porter potties for our, to be our facilities. When we hosted home events, we went with the restroom trailer. So we have power and water and running water to those, and this is the power to it. I believe you will also see a plumbing change order to get the water to it. So that'll be coming in the future. And the last one is just a small change order for Cherry Tree Elementary's for the mechanical contractor. This is a, just a net zero change. One contractor had to move something for another contractor to get their work done. So it's just, you know, they do it on a handshake, and we sort it out later, just so we can keep moving forward with the project. I probably said more than Roger ever does. I'm sorry, a little nervous. Do you guys have anything that I did not address? Any other questions for me?
We appreciated the extra information.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve action items 6.3 through 6.7 on the agenda? Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
So any discussion on these? So again, I'll restate, we are, what we are going to vote on is approving items 6.3 through 6.7 on the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Up next on our agenda, we have the student data report. Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. Well, good evening. And so this evening, I'm going to share some information with you about our students and some WEDA scores. So let's start with what is WEDA as we look at what WEDA is. So WEDA stands for World Class Instructional Design and Assessment. And you may recall from previous board meetings when I've shared information on this, this is more than just an assessment system. This, WEDA gives us a framework that Indiana uses, and it ensures that our English learners are supported both linguistically and academically. And all multilingual learners in K-12 take WEDA access. And so this is, they take this annually until they test out of our program for our multilingual learners. And so WEDA is a national consortium for multilingual learners, and it provides the English language development standards that help our teachers to plan the instruction for our students. And as I said, we use the access assessment that all of our students that are our multilingual learners, levels 1 through 4.9, they take this yearly. So in our WEDA assessment, there are four domains of English proficiency. And these domains look across from speaking, writing, listening, and reading. And so they mirror the ways that our students use language in the classroom. So they may be listening to a read aloud or listening to other students as they have a conversation about a book or speaking during group work as they're working together, they're speaking with their peers or speaking with the entire class. They may be reading in science, where they may be reading a science article or the science textbook. And then also in writing, where they may be showing their learning through writing. They may be writing an essay in their language arts classes. But it really helps us to look at where their strengths are and help us to guide that instruction. So the students receive a composite score that is made up of these four domains. And then they also receive a score for each of the domains. Then again, that helps the teachers to plan their instruction, to really look at where are their strengths and start from working on their strengths, and then to shoring up the areas where they have needs in those other areas. So WEDA does have six proficiency levels. And these levels describe the developmental path students follow as they acquire English. So movement through these levels may take multiple years. They do take multiple years for our students that come in. At a Level 1, that is at that entering stage where they have very minimal English language, and they rely more on gestures or more on drawings or using their home language and going back and forth between that and new words that they're picking up. All the way through a Level 6, which is a fluent where the student communicates clearly. The student has the skills that they need for that academic language as well as the social language. So as our students move through, typically, our students move a level every one to two years in our, the WEDA progression. And they look at, we really want to look at the upper levels where that's the most academic, complex pieces. So when our students do reach a Level 5 in Indiana, where they're bridging, that's where they are exited from the program. Because at Level 5 in Indiana, they talk about they have that, they can engage in those conversations. They can understand the tasks with minimal support. So we still monitor our students, but then they are exited from the multilingual language program at that Level 5. So looking at how our students did compared to last year, as you can see, we saw significant increases in our students making growth on the WEDA access assessment. So this year, we had 74% of our multilingual learners grew in their English proficiency, and that was up from 60% last year. So we did see a 14% growth, which is very significant. And most of the growth you, we saw in the levels 0.1 to 0.9, in those smaller increments, which is, that is developmentally appropriate. As I said, our students take one to two years to move a level. And so as students move through the upper proficiency levels, that's, that is typically what we would expect to see for our students. And the other piece too, as you can see, is we had 149 of our multilingual learners exited from the services. So they scored that Level 5 or higher. And this is a really meaningful milestone for our students because it reflects their readiness to be fully accessed the grade level content and have that, without that language support. So we are very excited for our students as we continue to move through looking at the growth of our multilingual learners. So as we continue to look from the different levels, you can see that we have 650 multilingual learners in our elementary level, and 513 of those students showed growth. And we had 92 of those students exited from the program in the elementary. And so we will continue to focus on that oral language, the vocabulary development, and this will help build that solid base for their future academic success as our students move through the different levels. And then in middle school, we have 256 multilingual learners. As you can see, that's up a bit from last year where we had 239. And 196 of our students in middle school, they did show growth, and we had 40 students exit. And that is up from 19 students exiting last year. So this is a critical milestone for our middle school students. And our focus will continue to focus on writing and extended discourse, which, those are skills that are essential for students to have access to the middle school curriculum as well as state assessments. And then in our high school level, 9 through 12, you can see we are up in our multilingual learners. We had 247 as compared to 230 last year. And 149 of our students did show growth. And these, as we think about our students in high school, they're very complex language demands. So our students are both content focusing on the balancing the language development as well as graduation requirements. And so you can see our students are making steady progress in our high school level. So we're continuing to focus on the academic writing, argumentation, and language for college and career readiness for our high school students, our multilingual learners. And so we're very excited about our growth as we continue to look at our students and supporting our students. This year is the first year, this past year is the first year that we've had multilingual learners in all of our middle schools. We have a multilingual teacher in all of our elementary schools as well, and then we have several at the high school. And so we're very excited about the work that we're continuing. Another piece that we're looking for services for our multilingual learners at the high school level is we will be offering English learner-specific content areas in, for algebra, for world, world history, biology, as well as English 9. So looking at our ninth grade students, our Level 1s and 2s, where they will have very specific, both English instruction as well as content instruction. And we're excited about that new change. And we have a team of teachers that will work with each other. They'll, they're all specific to their content areas, but then they'll also work with each other because where they'll have a team of students working together. So they'll be able to meet their needs as well. So we're excited about developing that change at the high school. So with that, what questions might you have?
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Really great data and really appreciate you and those in our district that are helping support our multilingual learners. Is the lower amount of leaving the program in the high school years, do you think reflective of the difficulty in learning a second or subsequent language the older that you get?
Yes. So if you think about it, a student that is coming in in kindergarten. In our kindergarten classrooms, they, all kindergartners are learning that academic language, and it's a very language-rich environment for our kindergarten students. They have lots of pictures on the walls. They use lots of gestures for all of our students. So then that's compared to coming in as a junior, where not only do you need to develop your language skills, but you also need to earn your credits in, in order to graduate with your cohort. And so there are, it is much more complex. And then I also think about our high school, where we have our students, 5,200 students. And we do a lot where we shrink that environment. All of our language learners, in addition to the support that they receive from the teachers in the classroom, they all have a teacher of record. And so they get additional support from the, our teachers of record that they have a smaller caseload where they know their students, they help to navigate, they help the students to navigate, you know, the high school. And we have this in all of our grades, but at the high school, it's much more complex. And so there, there is, it is much more academically complex, and that's why we see that growth, that less kids exiting there.
Makes sense. I mean, it's, it's very clear you have more kids entering. It's outpacing the number that are exiting. So appreciate that explanation very much.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. That's very helpful information. Can you remind us how many languages are spoken within Carmel Clay Schools? I remember that number to be astounding.
Yes, I believe we have 111 different languages that are spoken. And so ours is a content-based where the students are learning the content and learning English at the same time, but not a bilingual program where we're not translating. We obviously cannot possibly do that for all of our languages.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's, we spoke about this, I don't know, a year or so ago. We were looking at the assessment scores, and this is, it's really a great to have a very specific program that addresses the challenge of, you know, getting these students up where they can really listen in the classes and hear what's going on. So I'm really glad to see that. One question I have is, do we get specific state funding for these resources, like a grant?
Yes, yes. So in our state funding, it's called the Non-English Speaking Grant, and it is a line item that we, it comes straight into our funding formula for our students. And it's based on, I forget what the amounts are. but it's a little bit more for our levels one through two as compared to our levels three and four students. We also then have a federal grant that is over and above that. It's a Title III grant, that's a much smaller grant that helps to support the professional development that we do. This year, we're working on bringing PSYOP training, which is a very specific training for our, our teachers in middle school and in high school where they're planning the lessons. And so we're bringing some trainers in from the outside. And our Title III grant will help to support that piece as well.
Yeah, one last question. The, these charts where you show district growth by level, do you have prior year history or is this just where we started gathering in twenty twenty-four?
We do have prior year, yes. Yeah, I was putting in just our two different levels for now. Because one of the things we have to keep in mind is in the, again, the WEDA test will change again. But our tests, and this is the same thing with ILEARN. It changes quite significantly. Last year's test and this year's test were the same test. It didn't change. Next year, WEDA will change again. So when you do, you do multiple years out of data, sometimes you're not comparing apples to apples because the test changes so significantly. Like, like with ILEARN, that pretty much has changed every year.
Particularly for my step.
Well, no, even just ILEARN, like for example, this year and later on, once the data is no longer embargoed, I'll bring that, I'll share that with you. But one of the changes with ILEARN is that the students had to do a writing portion on ILEARN this year, which they typically do every year. But this year, they were testing the items, so they did not count in their overall score. So, so we're not comparing, you know, what the scores this year, we're not comparing them to what it was last year because last year, the writing portion did, was included in their overall scores. So it, it, when you do look at over multiple years, you're not always, there's, there's so many other.
Are these two years pretty comparable as far as the testing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the information. Sort of segues a little bit off of Greg's question. So I, I know over the last few years, we've seen an increase in multilingual learners throughout the district. And certainly you've outlined sort of the trajectory and how the district has shifted resources and how we've dedicated staff in each of our schools, elementary and the secondary schools. I know nobody can forecast the future, but as you look, as this continues to evolve, how do you foresee us needing to continue to evolve to ensure that we're continuing to support our students and meet them where they're going?
Sure, sure. So we'll like, we'll continue to look at our students that are coming in, look at, looking at their specific needs and at their different levels as well. And then put those supports in place based on the needs of our students. So our MLL teachers, they have the opportunity to have that ongoing professional learning. They collaborate together as a district group. They meet with Mrs. Howard, our, one of our assistant directors of curriculum that oversees our English language programming. And so we look at what, what are the needs that we have? And it, for example, at our middle school level, another change we're bringing in for this next year is our level ones and twos will be in a language arts specific course using a curriculum that we will, it'll be specific. It's not specific for English learners, but it does have a lot of the supports in place. And we can provide those supports for our students. And so they'll be getting their English language development alongside of their language development as well, which will help give even more support for our students. So we continue to always assess what is happening with our students. And then are we seeing the progress we want? And if not, then what changes do we need to make? And we do that collaboratively with our teachers, with our administrators throughout. So we're constantly doing a mini-program evaluation just because we only have, you know, when you come in, we want to get them to learn English as quickly as possible so that they can continue to learn the content as well.
For sure. Thank you. I, I just, my, my gut tells me this is only going to become, continue to become more and more complex. Right? As our student population continues to diversify and we have more students that are entering our school district where, for whom English is not their native language. Number one, certainly we're seeing challenges with funding, both at the state and national level. And so the reliance on having that extra support will continue to be a challenge. And so how do we ensure that we're sort of meeting that need? And so I think we're going to have to continue to be creative. So you're, you're in it certainly at a deeper level than we are. And so just asking what you're, what you're feeling and, and thinking as we have to look ahead to make sure we're.
And, and one thing, as we look at, you know, as our numbers continue, as we have more multilingual learners, in some ways, that's easier because you have more of a mass. When you had, you know, three students at one school and two students, we, you know, over the years, we've done all kinds of different, where we've had a teacher that would go and travel. Or we, one year or for several years, we used to bus students to feeder schools in elementary, which, so we, we've really changed it. But as we have more students in all of our schools, in some cases, that makes it easier because you do have that mass of students that you can work with.
Can I ask one more question? I'm going to segue off your segue. The funding question, and I, you may not know the answer, but at this, right now, that's fine. But you mentioned that we have some federal grants and some state funding for it. Is it cover all the resources we have dedicated to this program? Or are we having to dip in funding for, we would use for other things?
Right. So the majority of our ML teachers are paid for out of the NESP, out of that grant funding, the majority of the MLL teachers. We do dip into where we, it's not. It dips into it where like our TORs at the high school. They don't receive a stipend, but they get an extra period off to be able to support the students. So it does dip into where they would be teaching a regular section, but it's not necessarily a monetary piece. But the, the teacher, the ML, the dedicated ML teachers, they're, the majority of them are paid for out of the NESP.
That might be a good challenge for our legislative liaison to point that out. I think it's been in some of the letters before is that, you know, we're dipping in the resources that get some more money for this program. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dudley. And next we have our monthly financial update, but not with Roger. It is with Ms. Koshar. Thank you for stepping in in his place. We appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Amanda Koshar. I joined CCS in February as the Director of Finance. And I'm happy to share the financial report on Mr. McMichael's behalf today. So we will start with the education, the operating referendum and the rainy day funds. If we look at the cash balance as of May, you'll see that we're at fourteen million. And then if we compare that to next year, or sorry, if we compare that to last year, you'll see that we were at sixteen million at this time last year. The primary reason that that is different this year is because of the timing of property taxes. So if you look, I'm not sure if it will let me, there you go, right there. So if you look in May of twenty twenty-five, we received four point two million from the, for the operating referendum. And then if you look at last year in May, we received six point eight. So overall, we will receive more money in property taxes this year. It's just the timing that is different. And so that money split between May and June is just coming in a little bit different. And that's the majority of what's accounting for that difference. If we look at the operations fund in May, our balance in that fund is eight hundred thousand dollars. If we compare that to last year, last year this time, right down there, we were actually at negative three point four million. So there's a couple of things that account for that difference. So like the other funds, the timing of property taxes is affecting that. So in May twenty twenty-five, we had five point nine coming in from property taxes. In twenty twenty-four, we had ten point four million, so about a four and a half million dollar difference there. And then the other factor is the timing of some transfers. So if you look at. Get this to move a little better. So if you look back in twenty twenty-four, we transferred money from food service into the operations fund while we were waiting for our property tax money to come. And so we did eight and a half million. And then we moved that back, you can see, at the end of May. If we go up to twenty twenty-five, you'll see that we did do a similar thing. We took seven point five million in April from food service and put it in the operations fund. And that actually went back in June, but June is not represented in those numbers. So those two things, the property tax and the transfers are what account for the difference. If you even those things out, we're pretty close to where we were at this point last year. And then the last one that we can talk about is the rainy day fund. So you'll see, end of May, we had seven point five million. And that compares to last year this time, we had four point six million. So our goal is to have twelve percent in the rainy day fund, and we're working towards that. And last year, we put in, as you can see, three million at the end of the year to get us closer to that goal. So overall, we are tracking well on both income and expenses in terms of hitting our projections, and we're in a strong cash position. So if there's questions, I can try and answer them.
Thank you so much, Ms. Koshar. Thanks for stepping in again. We appreciate you. And next we have Dr. Bearsford with his last superintendent's report.
Just exciting. And first off, congratulations, Amanda, on your first report, outstanding job. And if you'll tell Tabitha she did a great job too. And we'll have to Roger, you better watch out. You've got some people that can do some presenting going on there. I love the report, Dr. Dudley. And, and the one thing I'd just like to point out is that's not a, you know, an accidental thing when the, all the educators get together and decide, hey, we need to pivot with the way that we're doing our services at the high school in these specific subjects because they need more support so they can learn how to speak the English language and write the English language and, and grow there. But also they need to keep up with the content area of biology and English nine. And that's the hallmark of flexibility, paying attention to what kids need and then putting it together however you can do it to make it happen, to meet the needs of our students and, and for them to learn and grow. So when you see those little, you know, graphs, it says this, you know, the, the improvement of kids year after year in that area is because they're working, they're working hard. And they're trying to figure out what is the best way to deliver the supports needed so that those kids can be successful. So those, those numbers don't just happen. They, they, they happen because of educators getting together and figuring it out and trying to figure out what's the best way we can do that and leveraging resources. Like both of you mentioned, how can we do that? How can we pay for that? And then you have creative collaborations with, with like people like Amanda and Roger. And, and then the staffing that you do with Dr. Ostrom to, you know, maximize the efficiency and effectiveness of our staffing. So well done and always, it always makes my heart, you know, go pitter patter when you guys pull us off, things like that. That really makes a big difference in these kids and families' lives. My last superintendent report, I'm going to start with a capital projects update because we had chatted and we wanted to make sure the community was aware of when you drive by the stadium or when you go to different places, what is going on out there? And what's the, you know, what is our, our progress in that? So I thought we'd just spend a little bit of time real quick to go through just a couple of slides of current projects. So we'll start with the tennis court replacement. And this was a picture taken when they put the tension concrete in, which is not supposed to crack. And this was more of an emergency project because we had large cracks open up in our tennis courts that were not, it's not safe for kids to play on. And so that one got bumped up to be able to cover that. And if we'll go to the next slide. The objective was to replace the aged and cracked asphalt and then put that special concrete in there. And then also they did some additional changes in the layout with spectator seating. And really, it's going to be a lot better for parents to be able to watch their kids compete with those changes. You look at the timeline down here, the board approved the project in twenty, in November of twenty-four, and it's anticipated to be completed in July. So this will be ready for the upcoming season. And we'll, but go to the next one. So here's, here's the, if you wanted to see the, I kind of like this kind of stuff. They did the, the progress, the progression. So you see a big hole where they tore out the old ones. And then all of a sudden, the rebar goes down, the concrete goes in. And then you could see, we saw another picture. Go ahead and to the next one. That they're now putting the, you know, the courts in by color. And then next will come the posts and the decorative, the fencing that's going to be around there. And also we have a scoreboard now, which is going to be really good for parents and spectators to know what score is. It's difficult to see. All right, moving on. Softball complex is very much completed, but you can see we've put turf on the, on the varsity softball field and did some other facelift things about around that. Go to the next one, please. And this was to get the new turf in and to do some cosmetic upgrades. And again, August twenty-four, you approved that project. Construction began in September and March, it was completed. And we played softball on that field this season. So it was fantastic. And you can move on. You could see move from dirt to gravel to an impressive and beautiful facility for our kids to play softball. And moving on. The grandstand renovation, and you had heard a lot about the, the ground stabilization on that. And I got to tell you, when I first got here and walked around the stadium, it was, you know, I remember when that stadium was new and it was the state-of-the-art stadium in central Indiana. And it was just, there was a lot of crumbling, a lot of rust. We had outgrown the facility and the way that it was built for a smaller number of kids. And it really had a lot of pieces that, you know, really pushed us to start investigating a long-term plan in that with all the construction. And I don't think that stadium has been touched since like eighty-nine, ninety-one, something like that. So it's been a good, long while. This is a picture what it's going to look like. And so you can see that it's quite an upgrade. And, and if you look at it right now, there's no press box that was taken down and a lot of pieces coming. So go to the next one. So we want to renovate the existing home grandstand. And also we need to bring it up to ADA standards. Right now, we are very far behind in, for spectators who with disabilities. And so we've got a lot of work to do there. So this gives an opportunity to, to correct that. We're going to extend the concourse. If you've ever been there and tried to go to the concession stand, it's like a big mob of humanity trying to, to get some snacks. So now there's going to be actually three different areas for concessions, which should stretch that out. And there's more space, so it won't be quite as crowded. And then, of course, the locker room area is going to be expanded to make, to fit the number of students there and then replacing that press box. You approved that in September twenty twenty-four. Construction began and the anticipated completion date is August of twenty-six. So about a year away. I believe the plan is to use that lower part that you see in the picture for our visitors. And we're going to go over to the visitor's side and make that the varsity. At least that was the last plan I had heard that, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. Here you can get some pictures of unstable soil right there. Let me go to the next one. Some more pictures of it. And you can kind of see when Tabitha said, you know, she wasn't, hadn't been on the ramps, well, I was. And the ramps were all over the place. They were sinking, they were cracking, and some of the concrete was just disintegrating. So you can see there's a lot of good work there. And that picture on the right shows the expansion of that area where the concession stand will be. And next one, please. There's a artist rendition of what it looked like from the press box, looking down onto the field. And the next one. This is that redo of the area. So you can see the, the concession stands in three different areas there. Two major ones on the ends instead of in the middle, there's a small one in the middle. You see the new ramps that will be coming in. And that whole area has just got a lot more open space and, which we really needed in that, that particular instance. So that gives you a kind of a pretty good. in that particular instance. So that gives you kind of a pretty good look at what's going to be coming in August of 2026. And is that the last one? All right. So any questions about our little construction update? Now you're all warmed up for your field trip that you're going to go on in July. And it's pretty exciting. We took on a lot of different projects because of just the age and the number of kids that are involved in different sports and addition of new sports. And I took my wife on a little drive around Carmel, the Carmel campus, and went through all the different pieces that we've done over the last, you know, seven years that I've been here and involved. And I think we left place in a lot better shape than it was, and really right-sized it to the programming needs as well as the, you know, the physical needs, because it's just, it was worn out over the years. So that's that part of the report. Any questions or comments? I will keep going then. The 2024-25 school year officially ended last week with our boys golf team placing sixth in the state over two days, thirty-six hole competition. The group, this group was not expected to make it to state, let alone finish sixth. But they worked really, really hard. They defied the odds. And kudos and thanks to our seniors for their leadership, and congratulations Coach Reed and his staff on a great season. And they're just a really good bunch of students, a good bunch of guys, and really pull for one another, and I'm real proud of their efforts. While on the topic of sports, I wanted to give the Carmel High School Athletic Department, Athletic Director Jim Inskeep, and Assistant A.D. Jeff Hester, and Retired Assistant Bruce Wolf, a shout-out, because they won their two-hundredth state championship in the spring. It was the girls' track team that was the two-hundredth state championship. So that's got to be, that's a record in the state for the number of state championships. It also has to be one of the best records in the nation. I can't imagine how they're being much better. This year's championships ran the total number under Mr. Inskeep's leadership, which started in 2001, so about twenty-four years ago, to a record-setting one hundred and twenty-four state championships. Now, I was fortunate to witness forty-three, almost all, not everyone, I missed a couple, but I got almost all of the forty-three state championships that have been won at Carmel High School since the 2018-19 school year when I started. What a tradition of excellence. And also, congratulations to the coaches, the volunteers, parents, and most of all, the athletes who worked so hard to be able to compete at that level so consistently and for so long. So that is number two. Number three, I want to give a shout-out to two greyhounds, Kelly Fulk and Maxwell Gotti, who competed in the Startup Foundation State Finals this past weekend at Butler University. The competition has been described as the most elite high school pitch competition in the country. They pitched their innovative idea, Spheryline, which is a product or an idea to improve central line. Central line is an IV that goes into the neck of the patient, and they provide medication through that. And it's prone to infection risks. And as a matter of fact, in their statistics, they said that twenty-eight thousand patients a year pass away due to these infections that are very difficult to figure out where they come from. So their idea is really a simple life-saving, life-saving goals. One is to improve patient outcomes, and the other one is to support nurses, you know, who have to do, manage those pieces with their solution. So they were, they made the top ten of more than three hundred teams and won the People's Choice Award. And then, on a side note, they have a patent pending on their idea. And so our kids always, never ceases to amaze me with their ideas and how they go about it. Very, very impressive. And then I also want to do a shout-out to the 2025 Startup Foundation Educator of the Year that went to our own Carmel Clay Schools Teacher of the Year for the district, Craig Harper. So Mr. Harper continues to, you know, be noticed for the hard work and the great work he does with our kids. Which brings us to the bell ringer. And my bell ringer tonight is really just a simple thank you. The last semester's been amazing. I thank you for sharing the memories, the kind words, celebrating my last dash to the finish line. It's been an absolutely wonderful seven-year journey. I'm so proud of this team here at the ESC and across the district, our students, our families, our community. I hope you realize what a special place Carmel, Indiana is. And the community support for schools in this community is second to none. I've never had a situation where a student had a need, where someone in the Carmel Clay community didn't say, I've got that, we'll cover that, we'll take care of that. It's just been a real blessing to work alongside of such a special group of thoughtful, committed educators and staff, our extended CCS family. Carmel Clay Schools is an easy place to love where you lead. It's truly a place where students are known and loved, they're challenged appropriately, as we saw tonight, and they learn the importance of those character skills that are so important to be successful. So just trying to figure out, you know, what's going to be my mic drop moment here. So I thought, I'm going back to my roots, which is I've always been a quote-of-the-day guy. So I tried to figure out who would be the perfect person to pull the last quote of the day on. And I'm going to actually use two of the quotes. And it's from that famous philosopher, Winnie the Pooh, or A.A. Milne is actually the author. But Winnie the Pooh said, "If there's ever a tomorrow, when we're not together, there's something you must always remember." This is for you, Dr. O, if you'll share it, Dr. Dudley, with the rest of the. "You're braver than you believe, you're stronger than you seem, and you're smarter than you think. And I would add, and you're loved more than you know. But the most important thing is, even if we are apart, I will always be with you." And then the second quote, somewhat like it, is, "How lucky am I to have something that makes saying goodbye so hard." Winnie the Pooh. And with that, it's a wrap.
I'll have to follow it up with some kind of boring announcements, but. Next week, surprisingly, is July already. So July 4, all the CCS offices and schools are closed. July 28 is our next school board regular session. August 4 and 5 coming up pretty soon is the teacher contract days, and then students start on August 6. Our August 11 is our school board workshop, our first meeting in August. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Thank you, Greg. Any second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Meeting adjourned.